Okay, good evening. The Board has been in closed session since 6 o'clock for the Appointment/Employment/Compensation/Discipline/Performance or Dismissal of Specific Employees of the District and Placement of Individual Students in Special Education Programs and Other Matters relating to individual students. Can we rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there public comments tonight? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to reports and presentations. We have one recognition tonight. Jim Collins will present. This is for the American Volleyball Coaches Association All-American Academic Team.
I should push that, shouldn't I? I have a few comments, but let me save my comments until after I read the proclamation. Whereas, for the sixth year in a row, York Community High School's Boys Volleyball Team was honored as an All-American Academic Team by the American Volleyball Coaches Association. And whereas, since the 2000-2001 season, the number of recipients have increased every year but two while amassing a 484-team increase nationally over the span of the last decade. And since the award's inception in 1993, the amount of award winners has increased from 62 to its current number of 771. And whereas, the American Volleyball Coaches Association Executive Director Kathy DeBoer stated, "Congratulations to the coaches and institutions that won the 2016 AVCA Team Athletic Award," or Academic Award, it is no accident that a volleyball coaches association recognizes academic excellence as a team rather than as an individual achievement. Players influence each other, both in execution on the court and the discipline in the classroom. Whereas, the AVCA honors teams with at least a 3.3 cumulative GPA on a 4.0 scale, and the York varsity team, which maintained a 3.81 cumulative GPA during the 2015-2016 school year, is one of only 23 boys' teams in the nation to receive the award, and only one of seven in Illinois. And whereas, this accomplishment brings pride and prestige to York Community High School, to Elmhurst District 205, the families of these students, and our community, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express deep appreciation and congratulations to Coach Ken Doughty and Assistant Coaches Brian Fisher, Taylor Stipe, and Team Captains Gordon Johnson, Robert Kissinger, Jacob Wendell, and Team Members Daniel Bolivar, Rio Diaz, John Gole, Evan Hogg, Colin Hoben, Zachary Hoogart, Samuel Jordan Wood, Dylan Kelchek, Andrew LeWand, I should have you next to me, Michael Pennell, Jake Privet, and Andrew Weber for their outstanding performance in the 2015 season. Now... I have a couple of additional comments now that we have the backdrop for this. There's 37,000 high schools in the United States, and I'm going to assume that the vast majority of those high schools have a boys' volleyball team. As the proclamation stated, there are 757 teams that won this year. Of those teams, that includes college, boys, girls, men's, women, and high school, boys' and girls' teams, along with some college beach volleyball teams. But there are only, as the proclamation said, 23 high school boys' teams in the nation that received this award this year. That's a pretty small percentage. Gentlemen, you should be congratulated for that. And really, no matter what your win-loss record has been in this last year, I'm confident that under Coach Doughty, you've learned to win with humility, lose with dignity, support each other, and work as a team while excelling academically, clearly. These are all valuable life skills. So gentlemen, truly, you are the true winners here. You're also winners because you've learned from one of the very best. We have, we are blessed that we have a lot of excellent teachers and coaches at York High School. Ken Doughty's here, so I'm going to pick on him. As I said about Coach Doughty, I was privileged to be here six years ago, the very first year Coach Doughty's team won this. And I could also do the math that there are 23 teams roughly out of 37,000 high schools. Statistically, that's a 6 in 10,000 chance of standing up here. And I can't remember the exact comment I made to Coach Doughty, but it basically said, "Great to see you, don't ever expect to see you back." Coach Doughty has brought his team here for the sixth consecutive time, so I think the technical term... I think the technical term is he shoved that right in my face. Sometimes I love to be wrong, and this is one of those times. I just want to say this about Coach Doughty. He exemplifies, as I said, the excellent coaches and teachers we have at York. He is one of the most popular teachers at York because in Mr. Doughty's class, you not only learn the prescribed material, you learn to think, you learn to form an opinion, that opinion is heard in his class, and he makes you defend it. On top of that, when you take a class from Mr. Doughty, you get more than the prescribed material. You get to learn about life. You learn from your accomplishments, you get a lesson in your own self-worth. So all I want to say is congratulations to Coach Doughty, to the volleyball team. You guys are true winners. Thank you. Now... Coach Doughty, I'm going to hand you that, and then I'm going to, as I hand this to each one of you, we're going to make you run the gauntlet here and shake everybody's hand because this is a notable...
Six times.
See you next year!
Okay, thank you. Student Achievement for York High School is next, Charles? Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. I have a couple of good news items to share tonight. Both of these are things that have been made public already, but we thought it worth the time to highlight them here tonight and possibly provide a little background and context. The first is our ACT graduating class data for this year. This is a measure that ACT releases near the end of August for the previous year's graduating class. And the measure that we more typically use is our junior, have used in the past, is our junior-year ACT because all juniors take it at the same time. This measure includes the latest score from all of our students. So about half of our students retake the ACT after they've taken it as a junior historically. And this measure includes not necessarily the highest score, but the most recent score for each member of the graduating class. And this year, as you already know, we set a new high watermark, another highest-ever ACT of 24.7, which was a half-point jump from the previous year, which was, at that point, the highest score ever in York's history. And a .5 jump on ACT is a significant jump. And I put together the six-year history just so you can see that both of those are not an anomaly over the last several years. We have been on a steady march upward on this measure, which is kind of an end-of-system measure, a reflection of everything that's happened during these students' career in District 205. Just because it's been asked about in the past, during that same time period, Illinois and national scores have remained relatively flat. Because I know that's always a question is, well, is this what's happening everywhere? That everybody's getting better at this? And that's not necessarily the case. Just to give you broader context, this is a display that we've been used to watching for each class, how they've done on previous e-Pass measures of explore an ACT and plan. And as the Board knows, most of these lines end where they are on this graph. We will not have more explore data, we will not have more plan data. We will actually have one more comparable ACT graduating class year because the Board elected to pay for all juniors to take the ACT last year. Next year's graduating class will be comparable, apples-to-apples, to previous years. After that, we'll still get an ACT graduating class measure, but it'll only be students that elect to take ACT on their own, so it won't be something that we can compare historically. And then the second piece is Newsweek. Every year does a 500 top public high schools, and this year, York made both of their lists, number 186 on the top high schools list and number 188 on the beating-the-odds list, which takes the same set of data but incorporates the percentage of low-income students that are enrolled in that district. And again, just to give you a little bit of background on how they do that, because every one of these rankings kind of puts a different mix of ingredients into the stew. Some of them concentrate on AP, some of them concentrate on more state measures, some of them concentrate more on ACT. Newsweek is a blend of several different things. They initially screen the top 30% in each state based on state tests. So whatever test that state used, they pull the top 30%. Then they apply kind of the recipe that's up there. 10% is holding power, which that's a comparison between your enrollment freshman year and enrollment senior year for a class. Student counselor ratio, they put in as one measure that schools take seriously getting kids prepared for college and exposing them to those opportunities. And then they look at ACT or SAT, they look at AP, they look at graduation rate as well as college enrollment rates. So as I kind of mentioned earlier, both of these are end-of-system measures that are reflective of what's happened to students throughout their years in District 205. And I think, you know, although rankings, I think you always have to take with a grain of salt because they use, different ones use different measures, and it kind of depends on what they decided was important, but it's certainly a positive outside confirmation of some of the more in-depth measures that we look at internally. And it's nice that that reaches a much broader audience. You know, we have our KPI discussions, and we try to push those numbers out, but more people are going to see Newsweek than my KPI discussion in October. So I would be happy to take any questions if you have...
Had we been in this Newsweek rankings before, and if so, where were we?
We were not last year. And again, we have, and I, one of the issues with these rankings is they, the data that they use, so for example, for their initial screening, they're actually using data from 1213. So they're looking well back in the past. The other is that the databases where they harvest things have had issues in the past with the reliability of their data. We've had issues with York data, as a matter of fact, that things have been incorrectly reported. And that's a long, hard road to get any of those things fixed. Because I can't just call the national database and say, oh, this is wrong, and send them confirmation. It goes through ISB, it goes through the state, there's a whole chain that it goes through.
Next is the Student Achievement Objectives.
All right, good evening, everybody. We, when planning our reports, we wanted to do some, we want to share with you some information from some of the beginning-of-the-year activities that were going on in the buildings. And Mary's going to do that, but I wanted to try to set some of this up and put it into context to try to make sure that the connections between our student achievement objectives and all of the types of things that we're doing to try to organize our instructional priorities, that Mary's presentation about what's actually going on in the buildings, that people can see how this work is coming to life. And one of the things that I introduced to you when we came back, and I think I introduced this to you actually at the first August Board meeting after we did some of our first two days of our administrator work, was, is a concept called the Rigor and Relevance Framework. And so what I'm going to do today is I'm going to try to share with you a definition of rigor and get a little bit deeper into this Rigor and Relevance Framework for a couple of different reasons. One of which, this is kind of a linchpin for a lot of the work that the International Center for Leadership and Education does. And as you know, we reported on, our administrators reported on how meaningful that organization's work is toward them and what they want to try to do in their buildings. And so I think it's important that we just try to keep trying to bring all these concepts together as opposed to viewing a lot of this stuff in isolation. So I want to get a little bit deeper into that framework because I think you're going to be hearing more about it over time. And when I presented it last time, I just kind of threw it up there and said, oh, that's the Rigor and Relevance Framework. So this slide kind of explains what's going to come next when I walk you through the Rigor and Relevance Framework. We're going to talk a little bit about what it is, but also how we're actually practically using it to bring our work together and create some meaning. So Dave, if you could go, this is the actual Rigor and Relevance Framework itself. And if you take a look at the lower right-hand corner, you see that there is a phrase there, "applied to real-world unpredictable situations." If you look in our community compact that we developed last year, and it's associated with our student achievement objectives, we used this organization before we even went to the workshop and, or the conference and got deeper into this. We chose this definition of rigor. Applying information to real-world unpredictable situations is our definition of rigor. And the reason we did that is because words like rigor, formative assessment, they can mean a lot of different things to different people, and we thought it was important that we have kind of a common understanding of what we mean by that. And what we wanted to try to get away from is the concept that rigor means piling more homework on kids, or rigor means making tests impossibly hard for kids. We wanted to get to a more sophisticated understanding of what rigor actually means. And so in this framework, the lowest level of rigor would be quadrant A, and the highest level of rigor would be quadrant D. So if you go to the next one, on this slide, they have a little bit more detailed definition of what each quadrant represents. And in quadrant A, it's essentially the lowest level of thinking skills, remembering, understanding. And if you go to quadrant C, what schools typically do when they try to increase rigor is they will end up in quadrant C. And quadrant C does reflect more rigor because you see higher-order thinking skills there. But it also is typically only within the context of school or that particular content area. So the idea of quadrants B and D is to get the future ready, to get the college and career ready. And that's why this framework is, you know, has some direct connections to some of the work that we're doing with our student achievement objectives. And so in, one of the things that stuck out to me in quadrant D, that's a little bit of a distinction, is the phrase "create solutions." One of the things Tony Wagner's work on innovation is that we're living in a world where the creation of knowledge is really critical. And so quadrant D is, according to this particular framework, the highest level of rigor, and that just defines it a little bit. But what is a little bit more interesting and practical for us is if you go to the next one. And in the next one, you see various verbs associated with the different quadrants. Now, one of the main reasons why that is important is because one of the easiest and quickest ways to start to get more rigor reflected in classroom instruction is the verbs you use in your learning targets. Now, there's a lot more to it than that, but that's an important way to get teachers to start to design instruction and design assessment, design learning activities in manner that reflects higher levels of rigor. So this verb list, if you want to call it a cheat sheet or whatever, that's fine, but if you were to say it's the beginning of a unit or the beginning of a school year, you might see more learning targets in quadrant A. And that would likely make sense. But what unfortunately happens too many times in schools across the country is teachers have a tendency to spend a disproportionate or a higher percentage of their time in quadrant A than is what we would like to see, which is to push people to quadrants B and D, which is where we get into the college and career-ready type of, type of learning. So what does that really mean? We talked to you a couple different times about our instructional rounds. And so when our principals walk through each other's buildings together, they're going to be looking for evidence of learning targets and student engagement and rigor. So when they sat down and are continuing to sit down and construct their look-for's, we call them look-for's, what are they looking for when they go through these buildings, one of the first things they're going to start with is learning targets. So they're going to take a look at the quality of the learning targets. Well, you could see that the learning target can be a reflection of rigor, provided the instruction that follows is associated with it. But also, when it comes to student engagement, one of the things that we know is that students need to start taking ownership of their learning, they need to start to be able to predict what they need to do next in their learning progressions, they need to start to be able to formatively assess their own learning, they need to be able to articulate the purpose of their learning. And so they can't truly be engaged in their learning if they don't know the target that they're shooting for. So I'm just kind of using that as an example of how all of these three things that we're doing in our instructional rounds are really related to the same conversation, and they're not just a bunch of different things. And so that's kind of my brief or lengthy, depending on your perspective, introduction to the Rigor and Relevance Framework. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mary and her people to try to give you some type of a feel for how we're actually trying to do the work.
Good evening, everyone. I'm really happy to be here to talk about some of our beginning-of-the-school-year work as it relates to our planning and getting the school year started, and also the launch of our instructional coaches. And I'm very fortunate to be joined by two of our school principal and coach teams so that they can give you a little bit more in-the-moment, on-the-ground description of the work that's going on in their building. So in August, we began with some very important work. Certainly, in all of our buildings, we began with two days of institute days. And that really aligned our work to our two student achievement objectives of balanced assessment and student engagement. It also included developing an understanding of the Rigor and Relevance Framework that Dr. Meyer just referenced for you. At the early childhood and high school level, teachers engaged in the development of quality professional learning communities and the development of a collaborative culture. And at the elementary level, extensive time and emphasis was placed on the new ELA curriculum, which was such an important part of the work to be done there. Our middle schools had focus times for their content area departments and a series of breakout sessions that aligned to school improvement plans, the student achievement objectives, but also allowed teachers to have some choice in work that would align to their own professional goals. Our building-based institute days, which were the second day of the two, continued the emphasis on student engagement, the Rigor and Relevance Framework, and they did that through collaborative team activities and planning that, while aligned across the district, was really specific to the building efforts that were taking place. Also, in August, we began our work with our instructional coaches. This is a very talented, committed, hard-working group of professionals. I'm leading the work with the coaches, so I get the great pleasure of working with them very closely, and it's been just a great, great start. We began with a really two-day intensive academy. We were defining the role of instructional coaches so that we had a common understanding, focused on about four roles that our coaches will be working within this year. And then important work each day where our principals joined us, for the principals and coaches to build a partnership, set some goals, and then develop a presentation to introduce coaching to their building that had a consistent theme and message across the district. So all of our staff across all of our buildings really have learned about coaching and how it will be implemented consistent and district-wide. So we have two coach teams here in person, and then we have, through the beauty of technology, our York High School coaching team, who also will be sharing a little bit. So we're going to start with our EC coach and principal team, Susan Condratt and Bridget McDonald.
Welcome. It's such a nice pleasure to be able to get to talk to you about all the work that's going on in early childhood. I wanted to go ahead and start a little bit by talking about what we did at the beginning of the year. So this is Bridget, and I, it's first year working really collaboratively together. She has been a teacher in our building, and so she moved up to the role as instructional coach when we did the hiring process, but she still is teaching. So she's in a dual role, actually, right now. She actually gets to teach in the morning, and she gets to be an instructional coach in the afternoon. So in a way, it's kind of nice because she gets to practice everything, that she's going to...
And preaching.
Yes, that she's preaching at the same time, too. So it's nice to go ahead and have that balance back and forth, but it's also nice to know Bridget in a little bit more unique way when we're going ahead and talking about what the district initiatives are, and having her help me bring that down to the building level so that all the teachers can go ahead and relate to that. So we kind of started off the year with meeting, after we did our administrative academy and after we did the coaching, we met together as a team to kind of go ahead and talk about what that means for our school improvement plan here at Madison. So we sat down and looked at the district initiatives, which Dr. Meyer talked about, which is the balanced assessment, the student engagement, and the rigor. And then we determined what our focus was going to be at early childhood to bring those three things to life at Madison. So we focused on, again, the process of the formative assessment through the learning targets, although that's one of our big things this year, and we also focused on, in talking about instructional... And we also focus on, in talking about instructional strategies to improve the student engagement and what that would look like. And the student engagement, meaning how much ownership can kids take at early childhood to go and be responsible for their own learning? So that's kind of the other thing, the other aspect that we're working with. And then also the rigor. And the curriculum is the other part that we're talking about and how to bump that up a little bit. So that was kind of that part. During the institute day, then, I had the pleasure of having both of the institute days at early childhoods because we're kind of a little unique, so I got to have both of them myself. And we spent that time being able to go ahead and really work together in collaborative teams to talk about what that means and what that work looks like in the, in the building. So what we did is go ahead and talk about what the district initiatives were, we shared our school improvement plan, and then we talked a little bit about what professional goals were going to look like down at the individual level. So bringing it more down to what the classrooms would be doing inside of their classrooms, and that their goals should be relating to these three targets at the same time, too. So after that, we, we, I want, I want to let Bridget present it as her role of the instructional coach, and she was able to be, and how she'd be working with Madison to help us reach those district initiatives, as well as go ahead and assist teachers inside the classroom. And then we discussed the professional goal setting, and she's been working with that. And I'm going to turn it over to Bridget to talk a little bit more about kind of what her on-the-ground work looks like, keeping in mind that she's only working half a day, okay? So keep that in mind.
Lot to do. So as the new position of coach has been really well-received at Madison, which I'm very grateful for because it makes my job as a coach easier and a lot more, you can achieve a lot more when teachers buy in. And I think the reason, too, I also am teaching half a day, so everything I'm talking about, I'm doing myself. So it really, I feel like the teachers really understand and listen to me because I am able to do it myself and come back with more feedback and problem-solve with them in the process, which has been really great, although I wish I had more time in the day because there's a lot to get done. But so far, I've met with each teacher at Madison individually. We've talked about their strengths as teachers, we've talked about what they need to work on this year, we looked at the Danielson Framework for guidance on that, we developed professional goals, I helped them develop their professional goals and align them with the district goals, which I think has been super helpful this year because I feel in the past, they've been on their own for those kind of things. Not, well, they have the principal, but I think talking to another teacher, you get a lot more meat for your, you know, I think it's just a different kind of collaboration. So that's been really nice, and that's been well-received by the staff. We've, we've developed plans of action, so the teachers are not only writing their professional goals, we're actually talking about how we're going to achieve those goals and how we're going to measure them, and what I can do as their coach to support them. So it's been a really nice give and take from both of us. After meeting with all the teachers, I've been following up with each teacher, so keeping, checking in, making sure they're keeping up with what they promised they said they're going to work on this year. So we've been problem-solving, we've been, you know, talking about collaborating, teach different teaching instruction methods to their three goals. We've aligned their goals with learning targets, student engagement, and I think we did student self-assessment because that was something we had trouble with at an early childhood level, since they're so little, to try to figure out how we have, what that looks like. And I've also been leading teacher-team meetings and keeping focus on instructional strategies. Sometimes those meetings can get off-focus without someone to bring them back, so I feel as a role of the coach, I've been there to bring them back to the focus. And helping Susan present and prepare for late arrival and SIP days, too, has also been great because I feel like teachers have been giving me input and feedback about how it's going, what's going right, what's going wrong, and problem-solving. So I feel like overall, it's been a very productive school year, and we're only in mid-September, so that's it.
Thank you. So we also have the Coach and Principal Team from Hawthorne Elementary School, Nikki Tamuro and Effie Nassis.
Hi, guys. So I have to go off-script just a little bit. Dave, if you could go back to Dr. Moyer's original, this is what he was going to talk about this evening, like, three slides over. Yeah. So you know how sometimes you wonder if you're on the right track? I think I'm on the right track because this is exactly what we did on our late, on the day that we had with our staff. Effie and I looked at each other, sorry, I have to introduce Effie Nassis, she's our instructional coach, my sidekick, we love her. And this is exactly what we did with our staff on our institute day, and that's what I'm here to talk with you a little bit about today. So we definitely defined rigor. We showed the quadrants, and then the other slide that Dr. Moyer had with all the verbs, we, we double-sided it and laminated it and gave it to the teachers so that they could then take it into their team meetings and then use it when they're writing their learning targets. We did a lengthy discussion on learning targets, and when I get back to my script, I'll talk to you about that. We talked about instructional rounds and what that would look like, and I actually had the opportunity Monday, it's only Tuesday yesterday, to go in and do some instructional rounds at Lincoln, and it was, it was really eye-opening and exciting, good stuff. We talked about student engagement and rigor, and then I brought that kind of in for the teachers and kind of explained to them why it's important, and then the relationship. So that's what we did. So let me go back to my script. So we started, I really felt it was important to start with the belief statements that we worked on over the summer. Dr. Moyer, and actually, we talked on the plane, back to the plane, about our mission statement and how long and lengthy it is, and no one really lives it and breathes it or could really talk to you about it or tell you. So we, as an administrative team, worked together, and we had chart paper around the room, and we all talked about what is it that we really believe? And we wanted short, little statements. And so he took all of our work, and then we came up with the four that, that we now have, which you know, I'm sure you all know them. All students must, must learn and grow, there's that shared responsibility for student growth, decisions need to be made on what's best for students, not what's best for adults, and we are future-focused. And so I really wanted the teachers to understand where those belief statements came from because I truly believe it's the foundation of everything that we're going to do moving forward. Then we went into the instructional coach presentation, and one of the things that I felt was really powerful was the way Mary, she gave us the framework for the presentation, but then we were able to take it at the building level and, you know, really make it fit our building. But having that systematic approach that we're all sharing together was crucial to ensure that we're all implementing this the way that it, the district is expecting us to. So I thought that was, that was really, really great. And we talked about, I don't want to talk too long, but we talked about the four main roles of the coach and explained those to the teachers. I'm really big as a leader on loose and tight, so we talked about what's loose and what's tight. And what's loose is, I don't care if she's modeling for you, or she's co-teaching, or she's a resource gatherer. Right now, with our new ELA curriculum, she's really a resource gatherer because they need some help with that. We're working on building scope and sequence, and so she's doing a lot of that work. But the tight part is, you have to have a pre-conference meeting. You have to talk with her afterwards about how the lesson went. So this isn't just all Effie going in and implementing, this is how are we doing this together, and then how are we going to take that and move forward and do something even bigger and more powerful with it? So that was the loose-tight part that we brought. And then we had a 30, 60-day plan that we shared, we came up with, and we shared it with the staff, and I have a really great slide, oh, it's coming up soon, that we're going to talk to you about. And we're already way beyond where we thought we'd be 90 days from now, and so we're going to talk a little bit about that in a minute. Then we went into our school improvement plan, and, you know, I showed them how, I took them to the website and showed them where the district improvement plan is, and then how we built through the building leadership team, the school improvement plan. Then we looked at data, and this is one of the first times that I've handed the staff the data, and I said, listen, I want you guys to take some time and really dig in, what is the data telling us? Because if I stand before them and tell them what the data is telling us, it's very different than if they realize it themselves. And the long and short of it is that our kids are coming in super high, and we're not growing them like we should be or could be. And they, that was very powerful. So then where did that lead us? Okay, how are we going to do that? If our students are more engaged and we increase the rigor, that's how we're going to get there. And so it kind of made it their idea. Oh, okay, now I see why, why you're talking about rigor. I see why you're talking about student engagement. That's why we need to do what we're doing. Then Tim did a really nice job of taking them into the map data, Tim Riordan, our new assistant principal. He took them into the map data and kind of showed them how to use the map data to do some goal-setting in a different way than, than we've done before. And our last activity of the day was our learning target PowerPoint that Effie worked on with some other instructional coaches, and we talked with the teachers about what learning, what a learning target is and why it's important and what that's going to look like in the classroom. And I'm not going to lie, I'm not going to tell you that everybody was like, great, got it, I'm going. It was, huh, what are we doing? And so we are so excited standing before you tonight because in four weeks, I've come farther than I thought we would come all year long. And so Effie's going to share a little bit about this.
I get my own clicker.
There you go.
All right. So I just wanted to make some of my work transparent in regards to, so what exactly have we been doing in these short four weeks? And at the next slide, it'll be a little bit more specific. But breaking down into the roles, you can see a little bit about how, how much my time has spent in these different roles, mainly being, starting the year, especially with our new ELA curriculum implementation, has really been a lot of being an instructional specialist, helping teachers create a scope and sequence for their new units, making that come into fruition so we have this framework, what does it mean, what does it look like day-to-day? But not only what does it look like day-to-day, but how am I going to still implement all my best practices that I know into creating those lessons on a daily basis and still making sure that we're assessing and knowing that students are learning and that they're also aware of what it is that they're supposed to be learning and where they are in that. So that comes into the instructional specialist and the learning facilitator, excuse me. So been doing a lot of modeling in classrooms, having those pre and post discussions, and then going back and working into, with teachers and seeing what has changed, what has improved. But also being a resource for the teachers, what do you need help with? This isn't really about the instructional coaches at all, it's really about our teachers and us being there, able to be one more person in the building to be able to support them in however they need, whatever they need in order to best support the needs of our students. So it's been a really great experience to start with. And again, this is just a little bit of a snapshot of how the time has spent so far in the year, and I'm really interested to see how, as the year progresses, how this will look as we move on. So...
And then I asked Effie if I could share this because I know that she is not going to brag about herself like I can. So in the last four weeks, mind you, this is not the last 180 school days, this is the last four weeks of school. She has been 35 times, she has met with individual teachers regarding different parts of the coaching cycle. I think that's impressive. 18 times, she's met with teams during team meetings. That is way surpassed my expectation, our expectation, or I think your expectation. And that's just a testament to Effie and to our staff and to Hawthorne and where we're at and their willingness to allow her in. We could not have pulled off this new ELA curriculum without her, I'm telling you that right now. And so she is amazing, and I just have to say that.
The staff has been amazing. They've been really, they've been really embrace, abrasive in regards to just working together and being transparent among the classrooms. The level of collaboration that I've seen amongst the teachers and knowing that we need to use each other and we need to help each other, and it's really about the kids. It's, it's been an amazing experience, and I mean, we're just getting started. And please, I just, to clarify, it's not 35 different teachers, but just 35 different times in meeting consistently with staff members and keeping the tightness of the pre, the pre and post. But again, having hope and impact with every teacher so far in the building within the first month has been pretty great. So now what we want to do is...
Hang on one sec. So we really, sorry, we just want to be clear with, with you and with the staff that this is something that we're going to build on all year, this isn't a one-and-done. So, you know, what I did in, in August doesn't mean we're not coming back to it. So tomorrow is our late start day, less than 12 hours, we're going to have an opportunity to have some time with the staff, and so this is what we're going to do tomorrow.
Right. So as Nikki said, on our first institute day, started rolling out learning target, trying to create an understanding, a common understanding of what it is that a learning target is, especially in education where you've got lots of terms thrown out, so what does it actually mean and what does it look like? So I'm going to show you a little bit of, a quick video of what it looked like so far this year, and then I'll show you where we're going to take it tomorrow. So our learning targets so far, let's hope it works at Hawthorne. but how we've taken this idea and really brought it into fruition. And now the next step is, this is where we're going to pick up tomorrow, so I finally have them up, now what? So the first step was just trying to make sure we're all on the same page, we're trying it out, we're learning together, trying to make sure what the expectations are and that we're following through on them. But really, it's about the next step. How do you integrate the learning targets within the lesson? How is it where the students are actually truly going to be engaged in understanding where they are on the learning spectrum of that learning target? What is going to be the understanding that they're going to have to perform in order to be able to show their understanding and that mastery or proficiency of that learning target? And that's a lot of actually what our modeling lessons have been on when I'm working in teachers' classrooms and showing them how to integrate that, and hopefully that's where the next step will be tomorrow, and then, again, evolving as the year goes on.
And I had the opportunity, right after Effie had presented in third grade or done a model lesson in third grade, was it just a couple? I don't even know. I don't even know. Days are flying by. Anyway, I, we were talking, and the teacher, I can't tell you, she was just going on and on about how amazing it was, and I've never seen teaching that way. And so they're really starting to understand, okay, maybe I do, you know, maybe I'm a great teacher, but I need to be thinking about how I can do things just a little bit differently. And so I'm telling you, there's so many light bulbs going off in our building right now, we're going to blow a circuit soon. So that's our stuff.
So thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you to both teams.
Can I, can I give this great story and not say a question? Go for it. Both teams, please. So there's a question. Sorry, thank you. So this question is, this is very exciting, and I can see the excitement from you guys, which is most appreciative. Now, I'll ask both of you this question. What, what were your biggest takeaways from, and this is to the two coaches, your biggest takeaways thus far in, in this month? And then to Effie, can I ask, were you in the school before, or?
No. So great question. So I, for the past eight years, I've been at Bryan Middle School.
Okay.
So this is my first year at Hawthorne, so in the elementary setting.
In the district, but, okay.
Right.
Okay.
So new staff, but familiar with the district initiatives.
Okay.
And student objectives.
Okay. So since you're there, can you tell me what's your, the biggest takeaway for a month?
Sure. My biggest takeaway, well, I'll start with maybe my biggest, what I was most worried about. I was most worried about truly being embraced by the staff and truly being invited in and seen as a colleague, because we truly are colleagues and we're there to support each other. And that was what I was most worried about, you know, with the professional relationship. So immediately, surprisingly, that actually was an issue because my biggest takeaway was seeing that we have really great teachers who are ready to take it to the next level and want to embrace that, and they've got a lot on their plate and a lot going on. And sometimes it might sound like, oh, I have this and I have that, but really, they're just trying to figure it out. And my biggest takeaway is if you filter through everything they're saying, they're really just looking for help and support to make it work and to make it the best that they can for their kids. And to see a teacher walk away and be like, oh, I could have done that better, or I wish I could have done it this, that shows me that they truly care. So my biggest takeaway is just that this is just another way that we can better support our students and that there's, this position in itself can really lend itself very powerfully to student learning in ways that I, I hadn't imagined. So I guess that would be my takeaway. Thank you for asking.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great speaker. So I've been at Madison for 10 years. So my biggest worry was switching roles. So I've been working with these teachers, fabulous teachers at Madison. If you've never been to our building, you should, it's amazing. The staff is unbelievable, the collaboration is, I feel like we've been doing this stuff without having a coach. So when I heard about this role, I said, oh my God, that gives me two and a half hours to actually really get more in-depth with this. So... get more in depth with this. So Madison's just, the takeaways, again, I learn something new every day. I go in, I've been going in the classrooms and I can't, I didn't expect that either at this point, but they've embraced me, they've treated me. What I worried about is they would think I was a superior or better than them at teaching. We've learned to work through that and now they see me as a supporter. And they've been coming to me, which has been so enlightening. And I just feel like I'm learning a ton from them and we're learning together. And I think that if you just walk into the different classrooms, you would see great things going on. And then I'm trying to bring all those great things together. So that's what I'm taking away from this. And the teachers are feeling more empowered, I would say, as well. They're feeling like their strengths are being recognized and shared. So it's been great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for presenting and everyone, but in particularly for the two of you, bringing in what my question was going to be is, how does a teacher's role look? You know, how does it look yesterday versus today, or last year versus this year? So you gave me a flavor, and I think you both just kind of summed it up. So add to it or correct me, but it's more like a roadmap. It's the, I don't know what this really means. I've got all these things on my plate. I've got this, I'm going to call it a routine, the plans, you know, just my rhythm, right, in place. You know, how is this going to disrupt it? And how do I still do what I love to do, which is teach well, right? You know, have kids learn. So absolutely. Enjoy the, yeah, enjoy the day. So I'm hearing it like a roadmap and the questions or the, you know, concerns, right? Both of you said that, and I'm sure a lot of people are thinking it, is what does it mean to me practically? And what does it mean in my day of routine, my rhythm, my, you know, I've got these lesson plans, I've got this, this way of students learning in my classroom and me teaching. And so, so how do I make this all happen, kind of as Chris said, what, five, six years ago, when we're building the plane as we're flying it? And I'm sure that's how they feel. So that's kind of how I sensed it, and if you'd like to add anything.
So I would like to add, because one thing, as teachers, we want to know, we're planners, right? We want to know day to day. And as things have, as things are evolving, we've just learned to look at teaching in a different way, where it doesn't necessarily mean you have to have your plans out for the next week or two and you just need to know what you're doing, which is really a hard and overwhelming concept sometimes to embrace. I've been there, and as soon as you embrace it and understand that sometimes it is going to be maybe a few days at a time, but what you're realizing is you're, you're taking your learning to the needs of your kids right then and there. It's okay to slow down, it's okay to speed up, it's okay if things don't go as planned, because you're constantly adapting your teaching to what's going on in the classroom. And the biggest way that I could say to help teachers get beyond that is when we're working in our PLCs during that time and kind of helping each other plan together and have a game plan where if you move too fast or if you move too slow, here are ways we can support that, where their, teachers are feeling more supportive in that sense and not so much alone in what's happening in their classroom. So that's one of the biggest shifts, I would say, that amps up the anxiety a little bit with the planning piece, because logistically, you do need to know what you're doing every day and be prepared for it, absolutely, but just kind of finding more efficient ways of doing that together.
The learning targets, they're keeping us more focused. I've noticed that at Madison, our, we, every day I'm like, oh, that's what it means, it ties it together. And I think our, I'm trying to help our staff realize that, because, but before our staff realizes that, I had to realize it doing these things so that I could show them. So yeah, it's been a, it's been a very enlightening month, I would say, for us. And I think as a staff, it's holding a lot of accountability, too. I'm there to help them and support them, but they know that I'm there to check in on them, too, to see how it's going. Because a lot is on your plate and sometimes, that's the thing, I don't want to get started on a new thing. But having someone there that's actually saying, you're doing great, and you know, do you want to come see me do it, or I can do it for you and show you, it's getting, it's been well received. And I feel like you're getting more done with aligning with the goals of the district, building.
Thank you. And then from a student standpoint, to me, it sounds as though the students really understand more clearly what, why I'm doing what I'm doing and what it means.
That's the goal. We're in the beginning stages of that. We're working on that. And that's what the instructional rounds are showing us and telling us. I was at a building, as I said yesterday, and we're not where we want to be, but the data will shift out and we'll take it to the next step based on that data.
And I was at a building yesterday and I saw the exact same sort of thing. So I'm done.
I was just going to say, I was in the building, I saw the exact same thing yesterday, too. And as far as for the learning targets, you know, when they were talking about what Dave put up there, are we on the right track? We're on the right track, because exactly the same sort of thing that Nikki was talking about. Maybe she said it more eloquently than I did, obviously she did. But we were doing the exact same thing when we were, when we were going through our days at the same time, too, talking about those belief statements, talking about the learning targets. And you know, now the next part is, is now that we have the learning targets up, what's next? And I think that that's the big piece, is trying to drive home, how can we use them within instruction? And we've been problem solving and talking through that about what it looks like, because having them posted is one thing, but they don't become effective and actually utilized by students unless you're actually bringing them back into the conversation and the learning all the time. So it's, that's the next part we need to try and figure out, is how to keep referring and bringing them back into the learning. So.
So one last thing, then. It sounds as though even the institute day in the beginning of the school year and all of your institute days or the planning days that you have with your buildings and even the teams that get together have more of a thread of consistency of what we're doing instead of, I don't know if somebody would say, you know, fad of this or that, but they see the, where it fits in the context and the bigger picture of where we're heading and how we're getting there.
I would say there's definitely more of a connection. We're seeing that, too, as a staff. They're like, oh, that just, that ties it together. And you're like, that's what we're trying to do.
And I think you'll see that as a consistent message of, before where perhaps we had random acts of improvement, great things happening in pockets. But now what we're looking for is that same high, high quality consistently across all of our buildings, so that all of our students are getting the same excellent experience. And you know, we have EC, we have elementary, and I think even as you see the video from York, you're going to see that the expectations for coaches and how we work with teachers is similar across all of our buildings. As Dr. Moyer referenced instructional rounds and Nikki and Susan both did as well, that's another way of kind of benchmarking excellent practice. So it's very much similar to medical rounds where you go from room to room in a group and talk about what you're seeing. And then you look at the data from that and see, how can we then move it to the next level? Here's where we are now, what do we need to do to go to the next level to make those targets come alive, so that they're, they're living, breathing targets and helping students move themselves forward.
Just a quick question. I mean, this is new. And anytime something new is introduced, I would expect varying levels of engagement to grow over time. So it's been a month. So what percentage of your staff do you feel are fully engaged today? Not saying that the others aren't, but that maybe need a little farther to come along.
Or fully in it, I would say.
Right.
And do you mean fully engaged with learning targets and the focus of instruction? Do you mean engaged working with coaches?
Engaged with coaches. I mean, how many have accepted, you know, and really bought in? And how many are coming along? And again, I don't mean this to be a negative kind of question. I would just expect with something new that you would have varying levels of engagement.
You know, as I check in on the coaches, overall, they have been very well received. I think certainly you're going to have pockets of people who are unsure. And sometimes, in the face of change, sometimes people sit back a little bit to wait and see how it unfolds. But because a lot of the work also takes place in teams, coaches are influencing every teacher. They might not be working with them individually, one-on-one, but because they are leading whole staff development, or they're working with a grade level, or a content area department, they do have that opportunity to influence everyone. You saw the data that Effie shared, and that's data that all of our coaches are collecting, so that we can, as a district, look at that and say, how is the implementation going? And what do we need to do to strengthen our coaching even more?
Can I just comment, sorry? We kind of look at our students and we differentiate for our students, but our coaching role is differentiating for our teachers. I think we have two new teachers on staff, they're going to have very different needs than teachers that have been teaching for 20 years. So I think that's our role, too, is making sure that everyone's, we're meeting their needs, too, individually as teachers, which I think the buy-in, that's why they're wanting to do, wanting to work with us more, because it's really targeting what they need. Does that make sense?
Sure. And I guess just to my question, though, is, I mean, is it a third of the teachers? Is it half the teachers that have kind of really jumped in with both feet?
Well, 100% of teachers at Madison have met with me-
Right.
-so far. I'm not sure, but you know, I've gotten some great, like maybe, I would say, I don't even know how to do it. 60% are like gung ho, asking me questions, constantly emailing me. And then 40% are still like sitting back waiting to see, I think, how it unfolds.
Yeah.
And I mean, I could, I can only speak for Hawthorne, too. So please, I understand it. So this is my personal, yeah, for sure. So this is how it kind of transpires. First, they have to see that you maybe have an idea, right, of what's going on, and you have to build that trust and that relationship. And I think that started at institute day, and also Nikki and I being completely on the same page and seeing kind of that we're both there together, we speak the same language, and the expectations have been set. That was huge. Then starting to be a part of team meetings and making yourself visible, also kind of chiming in when appropriate, not there to take over or run any team meetings. It's not about, again, it's not about the coaches, it's about helping the teachers however they see fit. Then slowly, as time goes on, you have a few teachers that kind of start to pull in, right? And then you have this beautiful power in a, in a very positive peer pressure way. So through hearing, through the grapevine, oh my gosh, I did this. And keeping in mind, so teams are meeting every week, people are talking, and if they hear something great's going on, and I modeled a lesson in their classroom and it went like this, so now suddenly the whole team wants you in. And it becomes this domino effect. So it takes some time. I actually, it went a lot faster than I had expected. So it's definitely a process that I think is going to be naturally different at each building. But it's really powerful to see the teachers themselves embrace it and then kind of spread the word to each other with you just kind of being kind of in, like coaches are, you're in the back a little bit sometimes, just there to support when necessary. So it's been really great. That helps a little bit.
I think I can also share, as I facilitated the grade level meetings for principals last, last week and the week before. So we have an EC5 meeting and a 612 meeting. And we started the meeting off with what's going well, what's great so far this year. And both groups consistently was coaching, coaching, coaching. So you know, these, these are the two principals here in person tonight, but they very much represent the views of our principals. Now we'd like to show you the York video real quick. It's just a little snippet.
Listen up for six easy ways you can utilize a coach this year. Everyone on the staff will work with coaches during the year by way of institute day sessions or lunch and learns. On Wednesday mornings, invite a coach to be an outside perspective or fresh eyes on your PLC team. York's instructional coaches can help you implement a new strategy or idea with a co-planning session. After some planning together, an instructional coach will be happy to visit your classroom and go teach a lesson alongside you. Not every goal can be achieved in the first try, so we can help you stay focused on your goal throughout the year. And of course, coaches are available every period of the day to help address your questions, help you brainstorm or talk through an issue. No matter what you need, know that York's instructional coaches work for you. We aren't going to tell you how to do your job or create more work for you. We're here to be your lifeline and help you to be, you know, the kind of teacher they make movies about.
So I think the important piece of looking at their video clip is it's the same consistent message you heard from the other two levels. And that's where I really think the strength of our coaching program is going to come in, is that it's consistent for all of our teachers across the district, which is only going to support the learning of all of our students. And even though you didn't ask me, I will tell you what my takeaway is. Anytime I am asked to present at a board meeting, I will be bringing very passionate teachers and principals with me who will really do the big work. Yeah. Any other questions?
Thank you very much for having us. And I would ask that you come back, you know, toward the end of the year and just give an update on how things have gone.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. We have enrollment data.
Okay. This is the August data, and it's, a lot of times you'll hear numbers like six-day enrollment and that kind of stuff. And typically, boards are interested in the enrollment. A complete fall housing report will be forthcoming. Chris will present that in October, along with enrollment projections for next year. We update those. And we do that for you in October. But just to give you an idea where we're at, we currently, well, as of August 31st, anyway, we had 8,396 students enrolled. This is nine less than we projected. Or no, wait a minute, is that right? No, the district projected 8,387. So we currently, our projection was nine less and are currently enrolled. That's, that's what it says in the memo. I should just read what I wrote. But the, so just a couple specifics. The enrollment at the high schools, 2,751 students, which includes 29 students at the transition center. The enrollment at early elementary, our early childhood center is 237. I would point out that that will likely go up a little bit throughout the year as it has in past years. It tends to, we tend to add a few students. So you can see at the different grade levels, we're down 32 at early elementary, but again, that'll likely go up a little bit. Elementary, we're down 30, middle school, we're up 23, high school, we're up 48. But overall, the overall projections are almost right on in terms of our total enrollment. The average elementary class size is 21.5 students. We have, make an effort to try to keep the class sizes lower at the lower grade levels. That's why I broke out some numbers at the K2 level and the 3.5 level. So we have 82% of our K2 classrooms have 22 or less students in them. We have 22 classrooms with 19 or less students in them at that grade level. And then the upper grade levels are a little bit higher, but we do not have any classes in the district that have more than 26 students in them. So that's just kind of a summary for you to have some idea where we're at with the idea that you'll get a full report in October.
I'm just, just a curiosity question. Last year at the high school, we projected an enrollment of increase of like 100 kids that, or was it was two years ago, that didn't materialize. And then this year, we're off by a variance. We had 48 more than we projected. Do we still have the same enrollment or the same residency check during the enrollment process?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Thank you. And any, any idea what you can attribute the variance to?
Well, just, I mean, just the, the projections are probably never 100% accurate. So there's, there could be a lot of different variables that, that come into play. Chris, you've been dealing with those for a while. I, I don't know if there's, I don't know if you have a theory about any of the different grade levels, but overall, I mean, the projections are, even though they're off a little bit, the projections are pretty close to what we had anticipated.
Yeah. No, I'm just, I'm just wondering, if we have, if we have the same residency check enrollment process in place, do we have, do we have more kids coming in from parochial schools or see any definitive trend? And if not, that's fine.
No, not, not right now, no.
Okay. Just curious.
And again, I know there's more information coming up in October, so that might be where this issue or this question is addressed. But I know we outlined the, the- But I know we outlined the, the class levels for the K through 5. And I understand the class levels for 6 through 12 are not as, are not as critical, I think, with the exception in some areas. And so I'm thinking of areas where, you know, where there's labs or where there's, you know, equipment. Will we have some discussion about what that looks like in the October meeting? So get a better understanding of what those classrooms look like in the 6 through 12 arena?
I don't believe that that's traditionally been part of the fall presentation. I, I can get you different information. I can tell you that class sizes at the middle school are a little bit higher than we would ideally like. Class sizes at the high school are almost exactly the same as they were last year or in previous years. That, that hasn't really changed much. You're going to get some electives that are going to be, maybe some upper-class electives that might be a little bit higher if a department makes a conscious effort to keep freshman class sizes smaller. You might have some electives that you choose to run with smaller class sizes because it's a capstone course and you want to run it. So there's so many variables in the high school schedule that it, that's difficult to give one blanket answer. But I would say middle school's a little bit higher than I would like and I'm hoping that we'll be able to do something about that as we take a look at the middle school task force work and how we staff and how we allocate staff and that kind of thing.
And again, thank you. And I know that's not maybe something that we typically look at, but I'm just, you know, sometimes you hear things that labs are higher than other. And there's certain classrooms that it doesn't much matter, but for classrooms where there's limited either equipment and/or supplies or stations, what's, what does that look like? And getting some kind of information on that.
Yeah, I, we can, we can, we can show you the breakdown at the high school. I mean, you know, I, I, yes, that, that's, we just pull it off the computer and there it is. So that's easy enough to do.
Can I just clarify one thing? I thought I heard you say that we don't have a class size bigger than 26 in the district. And I think, is that supposed to be an elementary class size in our district? Okay. Just wanted to make sure that was clear. Okay.
I was referring specifically to elementary. We have class sizes higher than that in the district.
Middle School Task Force update.
Okay. In May, we presented a summary to the board of the work that we had done last year. And so we're beginning to meet again this year. And the first order of business in September is we have parent meetings at each of the three schools associated with the regularly scheduled PTA meetings. And then we will have draft mock schedules from District Management Council in this week. And we will begin the process of looking at that, the various pros and cons of different schedule options and try to make some decisions about, you know, what we think of those based on how they best support, what we think the learning priorities are. And anything that's, that's of any kind of significance at all are, are the types of things that we would then share back out with the community and parents and the board for, for more feedback and more input. But right now, we're kind of analyzing and trying to sift through the information and what we think relative pros and cons of different options are for us. The impact of the schedule is to support the learning. The schedule in and of itself is a schedule. So we're trying to look at things like interventions and minutes of instruction and consistency among the three buildings. And we're trying to make sure that we're allocating time directly with students to the greatest extent possible in our student services. So we're looking at that. We're looking at access to the regular curriculum and the way we program special ed. Those are all the things that we're finding in the study that we reported. And so we're taking a look at, you know, how do we move in a direction for, for any kind of improvement priorities that we identify? And we have a meeting scheduled each, each of the next three months with a District Management Council facilitator, Diane Allman, who you met in May. No, actually, you met her earlier than that. You met her earlier in the spring. She'll be coming in November to, to provide some direct support for us to try to take a look at, at next steps, how we would implement things that we maybe think, think would be important for our students. And so right now, the instructional coaches, which was part of the recommendation, that's essentially been implemented. And in addition to us beginning to take a look at schedules, the different buildings are piloting some, some different concepts related to how do we provide interventions? How do we provide the time for interventions? How do we use our assessments to identify which students need various different types of supports and that type of thing? So that's, that's where we're at with the middle school task force right now. And I'm just trying to provide you an update. We're really not ready to give a full report to the board until we get further along analyzing some of these draft schedules and piloting these interventions and just learning from some things and seeing where, where we're at.
Go ahead.
And thank you very much for providing this update, even though, you know, we're not at a state where we can talk through. So then my follow-up question is, and you talked about Diane was coming in November. When would be a time where you could come back and give an update? And as Mary was very quick to identify, we'd love to see the, the teachers and the, and those people involved to come and talk to us and tell us, you know, kind of where it's from the ground level.
Yeah, I think our buildings can bring some of their people to talk about what they're doing in their buildings with interventions. And, and that could be part of the report. And I think our bill, our, our, our building level representatives for the task force and our large group, they're going to start looking at those on Monday and we're going to meet on the 27th. And so it's, it's hard for me to exactly predict just because I don't know with 100% certainty how the process is going to unfold, what people are going to say, you know, what they're going to say the relative pros and cons are. And by looking at these, I think we're going to solidify our values a little bit, too, and say, you know, this is, if, if there is any give and take, you know, what's really most important for kids, those kinds of things. And we may have to work through that a little bit. I would say for sure before the holidays, because I think by the time that Diane comes in in November, you know, certainly at the very least after that meeting, but possibly sometime prior, if the process starts to, if, if we start to learn some things that we think are, it's time to, to share out to larger audiences.
Thanks for the update. Board communications. Go ahead.
Just, just one. And Shannon was with me in this one. You may recall that we had a authorizing resolution that we had passed on the final leg of our refunding. That issue was priced today. We picked a heck of a day to price. The volatility in the market's been significant the last several weeks. And Jim can, Jim does this for a living, so he can correct me where, where I step out. But we priced $18 million, $355,000 worth of bonds today, saving the taxpayer over 10% on a present value basis. As you recall, the target was typically 3%. So these were very good savings for us. This particular issue was 2.2 million. William Blair did a very good job of, of getting this done in a choppy market. They actually took down a significant, underwrote a significant portion of these bonds and held, and held them for sale later to help us get the deal done. So that's done. That's the last step. And now we've, we've gone through all, all of those.
If I can add to this, this was our sixth bond issue refinancing and final bond issue refinancing. If you add up the total of money, total money we've saved taxpayers in District 205, it adds up to $14 million, $971,000. And as I've said before, that comes straight off of property tax bills. That is not money that is returned to the district for the district to spend. And we've achieved that, we've restructured the debt, so we pay it off sooner. And we carry our debt at about half the interest rate. Well, actually, actually less than half the interest rate, about two-thirds, or I'm sorry, about one-third of the interest rate that we had been paying before, just, just because of market conditions, we were able to achieve that. So at any rate, I wanted to point that out, that this is our sixth and final bond refinancing.
I had two things. Does anyone else have board communications? Okay. So there are kind of housekeeping items. We, we have proposed, current and proposed bylaws from IASB that Margaret will, is going to attend the October 4th IASB Division Dinner, thanks. And she will be voting on the proposed bylaws. So I can send to the board the current and proposed bylaws. They're not long, you know, two or three pages. And if you have any comments, bring it to the next board meeting. And Margaret will represent us. And the second is our board development work. I'm trying to schedule our last board development session for October or November. And this would be with the IASB. And we can tailor the session to, to what we need. It doesn't have to be the, the survey that we've done, you know, in years past. So we can tailor it to our board and what, what our board needs and talk about how we're going to work together in continuous improvement. So I'm going to send out a few dates. And if you could get back to me right away, because these dates fill up quickly. Our IASB rep is in demand. So if you could please get back to me quickly and we can get something on the calendar. Upcoming meetings. Tuesday, September 20th, Performance Management Committee meeting at 6:30. Thursday, September 22nd, Special Board of Education meeting. Tuesday, September 27th, Board of Education meeting. Tuesday, October 11th, Board of Education meeting. We're at the end of the meeting. I declare the meeting adjourned.